Recording in progress.
Okay, we're back from executive session. Can I have my motion to read during, open the meeting?
So moved.
Is there a favor?
Okay, so the planning board was just for discussion purposes only. There was no action taken on the personnel matter. So we're back in the regular session. First item is a discussion item for HK Ventures in Calverton.
All right, thank you Chairman, members of the board. We do have Matthew Ingber and Keith Brown here from representing the applicant. This is just a quick... All right, thank you. So this is just a quick update on the secret process for the HK Ventures Calverton site plan application. The applicant did submit their draft environmental impact statement pursuant to a positive declaration, which was issued by this board. They submitted that draft environmental impact statement on May 10th of this year. Pursuant to the secret regulations, the planning board as lead agency has 45 days to determine the DEIS to be adequate and acceptable for public circulation and distribution to involved agencies. I did get through the document. It is rather voluminous, but based on the criteria as described in six NYCRR, part 617.9B3, the DEIS does meet the adequacy requirements in terms of content pursuant to SECRE. So at this time, the planning department has reviewed it and does recommend that the board as lead agency deem the DEIS adequate for circulation and make it available for public comment. Now, this is not the board making any kind of finding statement. This is just the next procedure in the SECRE regulations. We would be holding a public hearing on the DEIS. I do have it in the resolution that we would schedule that public hearing for August 5th at 7 o'clock here at Town Hall to receive public input and comments, as well as to discuss other comments received from the lead agent, from involved agencies.
So Greg, I too did read through, I'm not going to say every page word for word, but the key parts of it. The areas of concern that we had as far as the ability of the water district to serve the site, the construction of a sewer treatment plant, all of those issues are covered, as I've read it, within this review process and will be adequately vetted in this process, right?
Correct. And so again, so the board by deeming the DEIS adequate for public review and circulation, that is not removing the board's ability to comment on the content of it. The final impact statement can be revised based on comments by the lead agency, as well as other involved agencies, to adequately address all those things to the satisfaction of the lead agency.
So we don't have to ask for more time?
No, no, right now, like I said, I have read it. We will be getting in under that 45-day statute by SECRE. And again, so we will now, the next step will be to hold a public hearing, get comments from all the agencies, and then get them back to the applicant and have them revise the document into a final environmental impact statement.
I know we spoke about a map and plan for the water district to be included. I don't think it was part of it.
That's correct. I mean, I have spoken to the water district. That would be one of their comments. I haven't received those formally in writing yet, as we have not formally deemed the DEIS adequate, but that would be likely one of the water district's comments.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Are we okay approving that and then having a hearing?
Yes.
All right. Thanks Greg.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Have a nice day.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is Riverhead Food Shops.
All right, so I'm gonna, for this one, I'm gonna read through my report. I'll present the application. If the board has questions, we do have representatives of the applicant. We have Vic Prusznowski and Tom Wolpert here, and they can answer any questions the board may have. So this is a site plan application, which is proposing to develop a vacant 3.7 acre site with an 18,497 square foot retail development consisting of four tenant spaces. There would be a main 12,497 square foot tenant space and three smaller 2,000 square foot tenant spaces, as well as related parking, lighting, landscape, sanitary, and drainage systems. The property is located at 950 West Main Street and is more particularly identified as Suffolk County Tax Map number 600-125-2-5.5. The site is located on the north side of West Main Street, approximately 1,300 feet west of the intersection of West Main Street and Rayner Avenue. Subject parcel is presently vacant and wooded. It is located in the Peconic River Community Zoning Use District, which permits retail stores and shops, wholesale businesses, offices, restaurants, among other uses. Property is located within Suffolk County Groundwater Management Zone 3, which permits a 300 gallon per day per acre sanitary density, and it's also located in the New York State DEC Wild Scenic and Recreational Rivers area. It is in the community designation portion of that area. The subject property shares its eastern property boundary with advanced imaging supply building, and it shares its western property boundary with a vacant 4.1 acre parcel of land, which is owned by Suffolk County for reforestation purposes. Pursuant to SECRE, the action is considered a type 1 action requiring mandatory coordinated review among involved agencies. We do have a resolution on this meeting to classify it and circulate that lead agency request. I do note that the DEC's full environmental assessment workbook establishes thresholds for development projects which would be considered to have significant impacts. That EAF workbook establishes a threshold for shopping centers to have a significant impact at 6,000 square feet of gross floor area. As the current project is proposing approximately 18,500 square feet, the proposal would be considered one to have significant impact on existing traffic patterns, and as such, staff recommends the preparation of a traffic impact statement for the proposed project. In discussions with the applicant, they have expressed the desire to install a traffic signal at the site's ingress and egress on West Main Street, which would require New York State DOT approval to install. Additionally, according to Suffolk County GIS Aerials on the subject property, there was an oil tank, which was present on it in at least 1984. I did research building department records and systems. There is a missing demolition permit, which was issued on the site in 1998. However, that file was lost in the fire that we had at the building department, so I'm not sure if it was closed out to the satisfaction of any, I don't know if it had health department approval, DEC or anything like that. Vic Prusznowski did drop off some DEC records from an environmental company related to that. I do recommend, did make the recommendation that he foiled any additional health department or DEC records, so we can get some information on that to see if it was properly closed out. In the absence of that information, the board may wish to consider a phase 1 environmental assessment to see if there's any contamination on the subject property.
Are you pretty sure that the tank has been removed?
Oh yeah, yeah, the tank's been removed.
It was a huge tank.
Yeah, you remember it, right?
Yeah.
So who had jurisdiction at that time when it was demolished? Was it DEC or health department? Because I know it shifted since then.
That I'm not entirely sure. I haven't gotten back into the regulations going that far back.
Okay.
There are, the site plan does indicate there will need to be a significant amount of fill brought to the site, approximately 11,470 cubic yards to meet grades. As such, this will require a chapter 229 permit from the town board. Staff would recommend that when the applicant prepares the traffic impact statement, they incorporate the estimates of the number of truck trips that would be required to import this amount of fill during construction. In terms of...
Wild scenic. Did we get anything?
We have not. We have not yet. I believe the applicant has been in discussions with them, but we don't have any permits yet. The plans will be referred to the DEC during the secret process, and we will get comments back from them. In terms of ingress and egress, traffic circulation, the site plan proposes a 30-foot wide curb cut on West Main Street to be used as ingress and egress. Truck traffic would enter the site, make a left turn, travel around the west side of the building to loading docks, which are located on the north side of the building. They would then travel south and exit back onto West Main Street. The subject parcel is located just outside the proximity of the Riverhead Sewer District, with the nearest sewer main being located approximately 700 feet to the east of the subject property. Right now, the sewer district ends at the Blackman Supply property. The advanced imaging system building, which separates the parcel, is not located within the water district. Being that the site is located in close proximity to the district, and it is located within the proximity to the Peconic River, consideration should be given to extending the sewer district and connecting the proposed project. Ultimately, this will be something that will require a health department approval, one way or the other, whether they use onsite sanitary or pursue a sewer connection. In terms of town code, yard, bulk and height requirements, there is a 50% open space requirement. The application currently proposes an open space area of 95,993 square feet, which meets the minimum open space code. However, I did note on the landscaping plan, there are some species which are not listed in the 2020 edition of the Long Island Horticulture Resources Guide, which is prepared by Cornell Cooperative Extension. This can just be addressed through a simple revision, but those plants that are listed on page 6 of the staff report should be revised to include native planting from that list. The site complies with the parking requirements of town code, which is based on one parking stall per 250 square feet for the retail space. Code requires 74 stalls, and they are providing 76, including four handicap stalls. The site plan complies with the required paving specifications and off-street loading spaces. However, I do note that the proposed loading berth on the north side of the building is 11 feet wide, where town code requires 12 feet wide. This condition requires a revision or will need relief from the zoning board of appeals. They are proposing a 10 by 12 trash enclosure on the concrete pad, screened by a 6-foot-high stockade fence, which complies with the requirements of town code. Site plan proposes a combination of building-mounted lighting and pole parking mounted, pole-mounted lighting in the parking lot. Building lightings is proposed at 15 feet above grade, and the parking lot lights are 16 feet, which comply, and they are proposed at a color temperature of 3,000 degrees Kelvin. As the site plan proposes, more than an acre of disturbance, it will require a stormwater pollution prevention plan approved by the town stormwater management officer. It does require, it will, the site plan does propose a sign, however, the sign needs to be moved back. Right now, the plans show it at 12 feet back from the front property line, where town code requires 15-foot setback. I did receive comments from the fire marshal. The fire marshal had comments regarding size of fire lanes, fire striping, approved signage, fire department connection to be marked as a fire zone, things of that nature. Beyond that, the application will be referred to the other involved agencies and other town departments. It'll be scheduled for an architectural review board hearing, where we can get comments from them. But the next step on this application would be to initiate the secret coordination process.
Question?
Yes.
Riverhead Water District, are they out that far?
Yes.
So they'll be able to serve the site?
I mean, it's located within the districts of the water, within the boundaries of the water district.
Okay.
The plans will be referred to the water district for their comment during the secret period.
Yeah, I see they have three other wet uses in there. I'm interested if the applicant knows if they plan to hook up to the sewer district. I see they have their regular retail, and then they have three wet stores. Just curious.
Vic Prusznowski, 533 Elton Street. I'm here with Tom Wolpert. Most of the things that Greg, you know, the width of the minor stuff, we're not going to go zoning board of appeals. We would love to be in the sewer district. The problem is that Tommy also did the engineering for the Blackman building, which you guys approved. They were able to run the sewer pipe to the Blackman building without a pump station. So we have, we're just outside the sewer district, but that's a minor technical problem. As you guys know, we would just petition to be inside the, and the main problem here is, and we'll do a little more research, is we believe we would have to install a pump station, because the gravity doesn't work to where the existing pipe is today. And since we'd have to run the pipe, the extra footed defeat because of where it is in front of Riverhead Dodge, that's the first thing I thought when I got involved. I said, oh, we definitely wouldn't want to hook up to the sewer. Just so you know, Joe, we did meet with the DEC about a year ago with all the technical staff. The site plan you see today with all the setbacks, that's there. They asked us to design it this way. They wanted to make sure that is, and if you look on the, you'll see on the, one of the compliance boxes there, we meet the compliance requirements that they asked us to meet on the, on the, preserving the, all the property in the back, because they were concerned that the property next door, there's a swale. So we matched it all up, and there's a line which we don't cross, and we do meet their percentage. Again, if we can, if, we're going to put the application in, either way, the Suffolk County Health Department's going to be the final thing. So we, Tommy's going Monday, along with about another, everybody's trying to get in by July 1st, but we're putting the application into the Suffolk County Health Department on Monday for our waste work.
Once they bring in, maybe Tommy's, once they bring in the fill, how many feet will it be to groundwater? Do you know that, Tom? Or roughly?
The client very much wants to get a traffic light. I know the drill on this. I have a engineering, traffic engineer standing by. We're, the next two applications we're putting in, we're going to put in the formal variance application to the Scenic Rivers Act with this DEC that has to be put in, and then we're going to put the application into the DOT. So that's coming. We did the first two, Uren, Health Department, and then we have to do the DEC. Yeah, we had a long discussion with the DEC, so, because I knew we had to go there first, because if they said, we wouldn't be here today, so.
So Greg, I don't see any notes about the sewer district in here. Was it referred to the sewer district?
It wasn't referred to the sewer district. I mean, I'll refer it to them during the secret process, being that they're not located within the boundaries of the district currently.
But is it feasible for the sewer district to expand?
I can refer the plans to them. I mean, I did speak to Michael Reichel. You know, he's aware of this application. He gave me a history on when the district was extended to the Blackman property. So I mean, we can refer it to them. I'm just, I don't know the ability of the board to force a connection. I mean, that's really, I guess...
Well, force me isn't that bad. I'm a contractor, believe me.
They run between $5,000 and $700,000 extra on top of everything else.
Force me?
Pump station.
Or full sewer?
The pump station. Now, there might be, like I said, we're going to put the application into the Health Department. We're very much open to be part of the sewer district. So even though we would have to extend the sewer district, you know, we'd have to petition the district to have it extended to our property. That's fine. That's done all the time. I just hope it makes financial sense.
Well, that's really...
It's better, it's better for the project that it's in the sewer district. I agree 100%. It's whether or not it's technically possible.
Well...
If Blackman was built, it probably would have been a lot less onerous financially.
That's why I think it's important to reach out to Michael Reichel, because there's a difference if you put in an injector pump in your building, or if he's going to require a lift station. There's a big difference there.
Yeah, there is a difference, right.
So I think it's important to get that guidance earlier in the process now, so you know which, which way, direction you're going to head in before you go to the Health Department.
Well, we have to go to the Health Department either way, because even with our sewer district, you have to do the minimum application of the $250, which they just put on like five or six years ago. So they got to review this anyhow, but we will reach out to the sewer district. I talked to Michael about this about six months ago, just roughly, and he told me, you know, 700 feet away, the gravity doesn't, we barely made it for a thing. We would have to do some, you know, lifting, pumping, injectors.
All right. How do you stand with density? Because you have wet stores, as far as the property.
You're talking about the Health Department that...
They would have to, we have the Health Department go in. I think we make it on the 300 gallon per day, right?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, we make it.
With the wet stores too? With the wet store?
Well, the only store is going to be wet is the main store, the main tent. That's going to be the food market.
The site plan shows three wet stores.
Excuse me?
The site plan shows three additional wet stores.
Oh, well, that's probably because we have, well, we make, we make, whatever, whatever we have there, we make the numbers, the 300 gallons per day.
You'll find out when you go to the Health Department.
Yes.
So the oil tank, do you know anything about that?
Yes. When the, when these, the two brothers that own the supermarket bought the, bought the property, prior to that, the original owners, the ones that own Metro, they engaged, which I gave a copy to Greg, they engaged Miller Environmental, and they did a whole environmental report on the circumstances on taking, and they have verified that it was all taken out properly. They did the soil testing, they did, they did it, they did all, because they needed that by the property, because attorneys wouldn't do it by the property without that.
Can you get a copy of that?
Yeah, I gave it to Greg.
Okay. And the last question is, the traffic light. I don't know exactly where this entrance would line up to...
It would be just where, you have twin forks now, you have where the food market is now. It would be, it would be just, it would be just to the west of Waiting, where this food market ends right now.
The only reason I ask is that deli across the street gets quite busy.
Well, that's us. And when we're vacating that, we're going to, we're moving across the street.
Oh, same.
Yeah, we're moving across the street. That's not going to be a deli anymore. I can guarantee you that, so.
All right.
That's, these are the guys that lease that property stand there. They're moving across the street.
Okay.
Because they, they know that the, that's why they want a traffic light, because they live the traffic hard.
Right, okay.
And, and believe me, we can request it, but it's not, you know, the DOT. I went through this with the gas station, because when I worked on the gas station next to Riverhead Dodge, the DOT is the, I know is the finals, you know, because that was High Point Engineering put that in. So, so I have a traffic engineer standing by, because that's going to be the requirement. I know right away they're going to want that, so it's up to them. If they grant it, they grant it. If not, they'll, they'll tell us how we're going to come in and egress the property.
Aren't there two delis there?
No, the one's on the...
And that's these guys. They're moving across the street.
The little one, it used to be the auto parts.
Yeah, Mickey's Auto Parts. But I think it's like a, like a Spanish services.
It's like, it's not a deli. They sell, I don't know what they sell.
Subs or...
The dry passports and stuff. They do stuff like that.
Okay. That's where we are.
Thank you.
Greg, if that DEC report on the demolition is clean, would we be required to go any further than that, since the records were burned up?
I can, I can forward that report to the board. Like I said, Vic did drop it off. I can forward that out. I mean, the report, I think, was from the late 90s, early 2000s. I'd have to see, you know, exactly what was done. I haven't read in depth until...
Yeah, I think that was a pretty clean site, because they were thinking about resurrecting that.
Yeah.
And putting that back into, into service again. So I think the site, the tank was in good shape.
Yeah, I'll get, I'll get that environmental report from them.
Yeah.
Probably 30 feet tall.
Yeah.
Okay. Next item is the Shops at Waiting River. So just a question right before we start. Didn't we have something with the same names at one point?
I believe that's the Shops at East Wind.
Oh, okay.
This is the Shops at Waiting River.
Oh, right. Not Relief.
Shop A is actually in Relief. So we've got a site plan application proposing to develop a vacant 1.3 acre site with an 8,655 square foot commercial development, consisting of multiple tenant spaces for retail and assorted office and personal service uses, along with related parking, landscaping, lighting, sanitary and drainage improvements. The site plan currently proposes a drive-through window as an accessory to the proposed bank or pharmacy use. Subject parcel identified as Suffolk County Tax Map number 600-72-2-6 is a 1.3 acre parcel of land located on the north side of New York Route 25A, approximately 120 feet east of the intersection of 25A and Dogwood Drive. Subject property is presently vacant and wooded. Site shares its eastern property boundary with a mixed-use parcel, which contains a mechanic shop and a former gas station, as well as a single-family residence. The site's western property boundary is shared with a dentist's office, and the site's northern property boundary is shared with a private right-of-way known as Front Street. The property is located within the Business CR Zoning Use District. The proposed action is an unlisted action pursuant to SECRE, with coordinated review being optional and recommended. Again, with the DEC's environmental assessment form workbook establishes those traffic thresholds to be considered significant impacts. Those, threshold is 6,000 square feet. As the project is proposing, 8,655 square feet, and including a drive-through use, the proposed development meets the threshold to be considered a significant impact, and as such, staff recommends the preparation of a traffic impact statement. In terms of use and zoning, the Business CR Zoning Use District permits a wide range of commercial uses, including but not limited to retail stores, personal services, restaurants, cafes, ice cream parlors, and professional offices. In addition to those permitted uses, the drive-through is allowed as an accessory use for a pharmacy or a bank. However, the drive-through is prohibited for a, drive-through is prohibited for restaurant use. When the application was initially submitted, the intent was to have a coffee shop in this location, which did not conform with the zoning. In fact, it was explicitly prohibited. The plans have since been revised to show this tenant space as a bank or pharmacy, which is a permissible accessory use. Now, in terms of the use and the accessory use, I have spoken to counsel of the planning board, and I've spoken with the applicant's attorney. The board should consider not to preclude the use of the drive-through, but the drive-through, as it is only allowed as an accessory to a bank or a pharmacy, the board should consider some sort of phased development, whereas you're not approving just a blanket site plan with a drive-through. You know, really, it would be accessory to an approved use. We can work out the details. Maybe Dick can speak to it. We can speak with the applicant's attorney, but the use is really, that drive-through is an accessory use.
Greg, is it codified that Waiting River, you can't have a drive-through for food?
It's explicitly prohibited, yes, sir.
Okay. It's discriminating against people with handicaps. Many handicapped people are forced to use drive-up windows, because they can't walk into the store, average people. That's something I think that we should at least consider and revisit. We did it on the, the handicapped committee years ago, and we wanted to encourage the town board to use drive-ups, because a lot of people can't get out of the car. Some people have wheelchairs, and they go right up into their seat, and it's a chore and a hardship for some people to have to walk into a store. So we will, I have personally felt that it would be a good idea to allow them at food stores.
I do agree with you, you know, especially in the world of COVID. You know, we saw how critical the drive-throughs were. I mean, we had McDonald's on the corner of Waiting River Manor Road there, closed, likely due to the lack of drive-throughs. So I don't disagree with you, however, it is in the code. I mean, the applicant would be free to petition the town board to amend the code. You know, when that was put in, maybe 20 years ago, it was a different time. But, you know, unfortunately, as it stands right now, the code is the code. If the town board amends it, you know, if the planning board would, if the planning board shares in that sentiment, you know, they could maybe take a reputation with the town board.
Yeah, they could possibly move the, move the drive-up window to the back, so people from the street didn't see it. But I just think it's going to be awful inconvenient for a lot of people to have to get out.
I don't disagree with you. So as far as ingress and egress, the site plan proposes two, currently proposes two curb cuts to serve development, a 20-foot-wide eastern curb cut for ingress, and a 24-foot-wide western curb cut for egress, with proposed left and right turning lanes. I will note that anecdotally, when I went to go visit the site, I parked in the gas station parking, in the mechanic shop to the east of it. I went mid-week, midday, and it was extremely difficult making the left out of that. So while it's ultimately, it'll depend on the traffic impact statement and the jurisdiction of the New York State DOT, but the board may wish to consider making the egress right only. Additionally, I mean, there is a, like I said, there is a private right-of-way just to the north of the site known as Front Street. The applicant and the board may wish to consider establishing a cross-access over this area. What that would allow is that would allow traffic to exit the site to the north and get out to Dogwood Drive.
I think that's a dirt road, isn't it?
It is, it's presently unimproved, but I mean, it is...
Except private, isn't it a private road?
It is a private right-of-way, but they could, they could establish, if they approached the landowner, they could establish a cross-access, which would allow egress to get to Dogwood Drive. The planning board has considered, there is a site plan application that's floating around... around called Venetia Square, um, so there is a potential in the future for Dogwood Drive to become a signalized intersection.
Yeah, I, I seriously doubt the neighbors are gonna want those vehicles going over their private road, I think that's a bullshit.
Yeah, it, it is private, they would, it would be wholly dependent on the applicant being able to come to an agreement with that property owner, uh, but it's something for the board to consider, knowing that that intersection of Waiting River Manor Road and 25A does get extremely congested, it would be something to consider just for forward planning. Uh, as I said, the traffic, uh, circulation on the site proposes ingress on the eastern side, uh, it proposes two-way traffic along the eastern and southern sides of the building, and the plans include a pass-by traffic lane to the north of the proposed drive-through. Uh, however, I do note that this is only 12 to 14 feet wide, uh, Town Code requires a minimum 16-foot wide for one-way traffic. I did refer the plans to the Fire Marshal's Office, and review and comments are pending, however, I do know that, uh, traffic circulation has been an issue, as we saw on the previous, uh, the application we just reviewed, uh, regarding fire apparatus access, they like to, uh, be able to, if they need to get, for example, if there was a dumpster fire in that northwest corner, uh, the fire department would need the ability to get a, a vehicle to that location to service that fire. The property is located within the Riverhead Water District, Extension Number 35, and there is an eight-inch water main located in Route 25A. Uh, there are some supplementary guidelines, uh, which are intended to be guidance, uh, to the, uh, the Planning Board has some discretion in terms of applying these, uh, to the greatest extent practicable. Uh, one of them is that for all parcels, the front yard shall be landscaped, except for areas devoted to walkways. Uh, it says that no more than 20% of the parking supply may be provided in the front and street-facing side yards, the current site plan currently does propose, uh, comply with this, uh, requires one row of parking allowed in front yards, uh, not to exceed 40 feet in depth, uh, however, this is sort of a contradicting feature, because the Town Code requires 10-foot by 20-foot parking stalls, and then a 24-foot wide drive aisle width, um, so again, this would be something that, you know, if, for the four feet, based on the code requirements, uh, I would not have a problem with this. Uh, and then, there is a, to me, it says to mitigate the appearance of any parking in the front yards, front part, front parking shall be set back at least 30 feet within landscaped front yards, um, the plan right now does comply with that, however, based on Fire Marshal review, if they need to widen those access aisles in the north, uh, staff would not object to a reduced front yard in order to facilitate safe fire access throughout the site. Um, and then there are restrictions, and, uh, it says that curb cuts shall be limited to one curb cut for every 400 linear feet on a public side street, driveway entrances to adjacent parking lots shall be shared and consolidated. So now, the site plan currently does propose two curb cuts with approximately 141 feet of separation. Uh, again, this will need to be coordinated with the DOT, but that does kind of seem to conflict with the requirements of the Town Code. Um, there are screening and buffer requirements, uh, when a commercial use abuts a residential use. Now, the property to the east is a mixed use, it does have a mechanic shop, but there is a single-family residence located just to the north of that. Town Code requires a minimum 10-foot wide buffer in this area, uh, right now, that buffer is not shown, I have spoken with the applicant, they said they are okay with providing that.
So, are they gonna put a fence back there also between the residential use?
Uh, that is a requi- there, there actually is a requirement for fencing, uh, in the Town Code, so that would be required, um, I don't know if they, I, we can ask them if they have any objection to that, but I, I can't imagine that. Uh, in terms of parking, the site plan currently proposes a total of 44 parking stalls, including eight land-banked parking stalls in the northern portion of the property. Um, the board should consider the proposed land-bank parking, and whether it is appropriate to land-bank or have the applicant construct, I did speak with the applicant's attorney, and they said they have no objection to constructing the stalls. Um, the proposed paving complies with Town Code requirements, uh, trash enclosures comply with Town Code requirements, uh, the lighting, the mounting height complies with the requirements, uh, however, the site plan shows 4,000 degree Kelvin, uh, Town Code requires a maximum color temperature of 3,000 degrees, uh, the applicant has agreed to revise the plans accordingly, uh, does propose a freestanding sign, which does meet the required setbacks from the front property line. Um, right now, uh, next step, we have a resolution to classify the action and initiate secret coordination, where we will send the plans out to involved agencies.
Greg, next door, uh, to the west, the dental office.
Yes.
Didn't we approve something for that piece of property a few years back? I recall it was subject of great public participation at the time, and for some reason, I thought it was a pizza place or something to that effect, or a restaurant.
Yeah, there was something there, I, this was gonna be my question, yeah, did we approve something there?
Something was approved next door.
I don't, it might have been before I got here, I don't have knowledge of it, but I can look into it and see the.
I think we should, because I don't recall exactly what it was.
And the church, we have an application for the church.
No, it wasn't the church, the church was further on Dogwood.
Yeah.
Yeah, the church is, uh, located to the north across that pa- the private road called Front Street.
Yeah, he was gonna put a pizza place in there.
Matter of fact, if I remember correctly, it was some kind of a food service, food service in there.
But it never happened, so I'm just curious where that stands and what exactly it was.
I don't, I, I can look into that, it, maybe it was one, something Karen worked on, maybe it rings a bell, I'll, I'll, I'll look into it, I just, I don't have any knowledge right now of it.
Okay.
Beyond that, does the board have any questions for me or for the applicant?
Um, that was my question.
That was it? So it still has to go to the state, right, for the curb cuts, right?
Correct.
And it'll go to the other agencies during secret, you said?
I notice in the front, uh, it looks like the, it just have a grass area, and no, they don't show any landscaping trees or anything, which is.
Well, on the, on the site plan?
Yeah. At least I'm looking at the site.
No, the, the landscaping plan is, I think.
Further back? Okay.
Uh, so that lands, they are proposing some street trees, uh, and they are proposing, uh, the street trees are two-and-a-half inch caliper, calorie pear trees, and then they are proposing some landscaped islands with, uh, forcivia. You know, if the board requ- if the board would like it, they could, I'm sure they could supplement, put some additional landscaping in there, just to help screen to be with the parking lot, good idea.
Go back to the.
And also a well, a well for irrigation purposes, they've got side.
Still waiting for somebody to bring us a waterless landscaping plan.
Uh, they did say they would install an on-site irrigation, although they would not connect the irrigation system to the town water supply.
Go over the, uh, the discussion that you mentioned earlier, about the drive-in, and whether, whether it should be allowed, shouldn't be allowed, or should be taken off.
Well, so, it's in it, so the, it is allowed as an accessory use to banks and pharmacies, um, not trying to unreasonably, you know, tie the applicant, prohibit it, uh, you know, we're not, we are not going to presuppose any violations, but at the same time, the drive-through in and of itself is not a permitted use, you know, principal use, it's accessory to a bank or a pharmacy. Now, if they're unable to secure a bank or a pharmacy tenant, they would need to either seek relief, uh, go for a variance from the zoning board to establish another use, um, so it was really something to consider, like a phased development. The, the site plan could show the site that it could function with the drive-through.
Hey, Jeff, maybe, uh, at a Town Board work session, you could bring up the, uh, the drive-up windows of the egress and waiting river.
I was looking, what I was looking at, Greg, is the fact that the driving that they're showing starts with two lanes, and then next down. It seemed to me, because you brought up about driving around it, people don't want to go down that lane, if they made it just one lane altogether, it'll give you a lot more room on the outside to, to drive around.
Yeah, I mean, there, you know, the question of, I mean, how much, you know, for a, for a pharmacy, I mean, does a pharmacy need two queue lanes, so that would be an easy way to.
Yeah.
Alleviate the fi- you know, the fire access around the back, if they just had one queuing lane. Um, but again, so, not that we want to prohibit this explicitly, but there needs to be some consideration for the board for a phased development whereby they would approve it, contingent upon, uh, permitted use.
Yeah, I mean, the space is 2,000 square feet in that corner, that's not, that's not really big enough for, uh, for a decent-sized pharmacy, and a bank that's going down the street, you know, I don't, I don't know that why. Banks are tough to get in.
Probably, it's gonna be a wheat store pretty soon.
Yeah.
Drive-through.
Hi, we have two Kimberly, Jeff, and the applicant, I did speak to Greg about this point a bit, we, we actually do have a permitted use tenant that we're speaking with that's interested in the space, but only if the drive-through is approved. I, I would just submit to the board that a drive-through as an accessory use to a permitted bank use or pharmacy use is permitted by the code, and if you're, if you're telling me that you, this is how you do all your drive-throughs with a phased approach, that's, that's how you do it, um, but I, I, again, I would just reiterate that I don't understand the phased part, because if you approve it as we are proposing as a bank or pharmacy with the drive-through accessory use, and we come back and we go to the Building Department and we say, "We wanna Starbucks," uh, we have to go back to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a variance, a change of use, which is very difficult to get, and then we have to do a whole new site plan with this board. So, we're cognizant that the use that we're proposing is the one that we would like the board to approve, because to go for a use change variance for anything else with the drive-through is very cost prohibitive and time-consuming.
Is your tenant a wet store, or?
No, it, it's, it's for, uh, the, the space that I'm talking to you about right now, that's labeled bank or pharmacy use. My client is in talks with a pharmacy who is interested in the site, but only if there is a drive-through that's approved, attending to that, and, and that would be an approved use. So, we would submit, uh, that, uh, to please look at it as we are proposing it as, as a permitted use, and not something else that may have come before you in the past. Also, very curiously, on the egress-ingress issue, I was talking to Greg this morning about how I, we wanted to get in touch with the owner of the private road that we're discussing on Front Street, and he happened to talk to him, Greg was doing his site inspection, the fellow who owns the private road came out and talked to him, gave him his name, and that's great, I have a name now, and, uh, my client is willing and would like to contact this individual to see if he's interested in some sort of easement or coordinated access. So, I wanted to thank Greg for giving me a heads-up on that.
Uh, Kim, if this ultimately gets approved as proposed here, I, I understand that, you know, the, the drive-through, it has to be a bank or a pharmacy, but what if it gets approved as is, but then your tenant isn't actually a bank or pharmacy, um, would it still be built with that drive-through?
It, it, the board approves it with the drive-through in there, and we subsequently can't find a tenant.
Right.
Then, then you can't, I can't pull permits for it with, with the drive-through.
Okay.
Because it's not a permitted use, and so we're, we're very cognizant that, we know that what our uses are permitted and not permitted, the Building Department is very well aware, and, uh, I'm asserting to the board that that is the use that we are proposing to put to it, and we understand that if it's any other use than a bank or a pharmacy, we can't have the drive-through as an accessory, unless the Town Board changes the zone.
Yeah, or, or for secret use.
If the Town Board changes the code, that's a different story, but we're, we have, we know what the code is right now.
Thank you. Sure.
Um, when, when Greg raised this issue with me, um, I think what he was trying to say was the design should anticipate that they may come for a use that doesn't permit it, not to, the pha- the phasing, I mean, when Greg and I were talking, we were thinking phases is a way of saying it, but maybe there should be a sheet of the plan that shows a design that meets the other criteria that doesn't have the drive-through, and so, so that you don't, you know, you go for the building permit, and, and it's not for the, one of the uses that has that accessory, you gotta come back and they gotta read you the whole site plan again, it, it just seemed to make sense. That, that was the discussion we had, so it wasn't, I, I think that the idea of phasing, like, oh, we first will prove this phase, and then you'll come back and we'll prove a second phase, it was, there's a sheet that shows no drive-through, and there's a sheet that shows the drive-through, you go to the Building Department, and you give them A or B based on what your use is, and.
No, I don't have any trouble with that, I'm having you.
I didn't think you did have any issue with that, so that's, I just wanted to clarify, that's the discussion.
Well, I just, I just wanna, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I, I don't think that driving, that, that, that drive-through should be two lanes, I think it should be just one way, I don't know how everybody else feels, and that would give you a lot more space for traffic to go around the drive-through, I'm not saying we shouldn't have it, I'm just saying it's too wide.
So, I mean, just roughly looking at it, I mean, I, I don't disagree, and again, that would probably free up some room to, uh.
Yeah, to get around.
Uh, thank you, board, um, one of the concerns that we have, and you've seen it with the pandemic that we had, the queuing space in drive-throughs, even if it's a, uh, pharmacy, becomes very critical, um, queuing space is very important, you have to have enough, because if not, it starts to block other areas of the site, so, we can, uh, based on our conversations with Greg, uh, we can meet the, the dimensional requirements for the roadways, so we will do that, um, and we will, you know, we'll also, we're able to do that side yard, uh, increase, and we're able to increase that roadway to 16 feet for a one-way drive-through, so.
Yeah, you have fourteen, you have fourteen feet, and he said 16 is required.
Yeah, we, we'll, we'll accommodate that, we can, we can accommodate the 16 feet and the side yard, um, buffer, and still keep the two queuing lanes, again, they're very, very critical, no matter what the use, queuing lanes are, you know, one person gets up there and they're slow or whatever, it could queue up pretty quickly, especially in a pandemic, and who knows what happens in the future, you know, a lot of people need to get, you know, to a drugstore or whatever, it's, the queuing is very, very important on a site plan, and you see that in other locations where other uses anticipated even greater queuing, and they provided it, and they've had issues, so the queuing, we'd rather keep the two lanes.
Well, you've got, you've got CBS and you've got Walgreens, each of them have drive-up in Waiting, in Waiting River, and they're all single lanes.
Yeah, the, um, well, I, I mean, that's just a, a issue on, on the client's part as far as the, their use and their development of the property, but again, the queuing is very critical, we would, we would not want to give up queuing lane. Right now, we have comfortably only about 10 cars, it looks, it looks like a lot, but when you start putting 20-foot cars in there with the, the turn and the, you know, the amount of space that they need, it adds up pretty quick, so it's only about 10 cars in the queue right now, so, that we would prefer not to.
And that's with two lanes?
Correct, yeah, uh, one would be five lanes, going, five on the outside, uh, actually six on, one in the stall, five and four, because of the radius of the turn, and again, I think from a planning pr- uh, point of view, since we can meet all of the code requirements for all the other driveways and maintain the double queue lane, I think the double queue lane is very, very important from a planning point of view.
So, Joe, if they make, put the 16-foot in there, it would meet, it'd meet your concern, the only thing is, maybe signage for drive-through and exit would, a sign or something, and it would be exactly what you're both saying.
So, and, and there's also, there is room, like I said, that the 30-foot landscaped front yard, that is discretionary, so I mean, let's just say if the Fire Marshal comments came back, if they wanted a wider, they could shift the site forward, you know, if they moved it forward 10 feet, yes, it would reduce the landscaped area, but they could supplement it with some additional landscaping to help provide screening, you know, that would then widen that to 22 feet, you know, that would probably alleviate a lot of that if they could shift that design forward, where they could, you know, accomplish their goals in their site development, and it would still meet, you know, safety requirements, meet the code, um, and still be a. But there, there's room pending Fire Marshal comments, where they could, I, I believe they'd be able to satisfy any concerns, still get a, you know, a reasonable product for what they're looking for.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you. Next item is Norfolk Developers LLC.
So, this is just a quick update, uh, the applicant for this, uh, major subdivision application, which is located, uh, near Cathy Lane and Rabbit Run in Riverhead, uh, the board did approve a sketch plan, so the applicant has submitted a preliminary plat, uh, so we have a resolution on to classify the proposed, uh, major subdivision application as a type-one action and initiate the coordinator review.
No new issues, right?
No, no, no new issues, just the receipt of the application, typing it, and initiating secret coordination.
Did we get any answers from the Water District?
We did not. We did not. I, we've, we received an initial round of comments from H2N. Those, I did share those with the board back in, I believe, November when we got them, but I have not received anything yet. I did advise the applicant that he should be beginning consultations with the water district at this point, but we haven't gotten any feedback aside from those comments that I shared with the board.
So that'll come up during the coordinated review?
Correct.
Because we haven't gotten anything yet from the water district saying that they could service this?
Correct.
Any other questions? No? Okay. All right, no public hearing scheduled this afternoon. Before we take up the resolutions, are there any comments on resolutions that are on the agenda today? Any comments from anyone on resolutions? Anyone that is here virtually, comments on resolutions? Is everyone unmuted?
They're all muted.
So they have...
They can choose to unmute themselves.
Okay. Anyone on resolutions? Okay, so we'll take up the resolutions. Someone want to speak?
Yes, good afternoon, this is Chuck Miller. Regarding the liquor mart resolution, we had discussed some comments with Greg on the health department approval and the topsoil requirement.
There was, there was some standard boilerplate language in our conditions requiring health department approval and something regarding New York State DOT topsoil. Mr. Miller did say that they would be using topsoil from onsite if they need to do any sort of grading, and the health department approval being that it's located in the sewer district. They're not proposing any new connections, no new establishments. I didn't believe the health department was necessary.
Okay, could you just explain why we're rescinding one and approving another?
So the rescinding, the first resolution is to rescind the previous hospital future expansion. That was the approval that was done, I believe, back in 2015. That approved a site plan application. There was a 3,500-square-foot hospital with a future 1,945-square-foot addition. That approval required a certain number of transfer of development rights to be brought to the subject property. So what we're doing is just rescinding that future 1,945-square-foot expansion of the hospital.
Which they were aware of.
That they were aware of it, and we do reference that rescinding resolution in the final approval for this. We would have them file those covenants based on the final approval, which would reference that rescinding resolution. So it's really just to codify the history of it and make sure that, you know, down the future, we're aware of what took place on the property.
Okay. Thank you.
Just to speak to that.
Thank you.
Just to clarify for the record of the TDR issue. The TDRs had been transferred onto the site. Normally, we put a box on the map that shows where the TDRs come from and how they're applied to the site, but they've already been applied to the site. They just won't be utilized at the hospital expansion, they'll be utilized at this expansion. So that's why I wanted...
It's the same number.
It's the same, it's exactly the same square footage. So that's why I wanted the rescinding resolution so that later on, if somebody looked, they wouldn't think that they could have both expansions. And in order to keep the chain of development of the TDRs clear, we're requiring that the rescinding resolution be recorded as a covenant so that anyone who looks and sees, because the TDRs are recorded against the property, when we do a TDR certificate and finally land somewhere, we record that TDR certificate against the property. So in this chain of title, the TDR, an extra amount of TDRs have come in. If you just look casually and saw that they hadn't built the hospital expansion, you'd think they still had more, even though they've built this if it's not keyed into it. So that was the reason for that mechanism.
Thank you. Okay, resolutions.
Move Resolution Number 64, HK Ventures in Calhoun. A resolution to accept a draft environmental impact statement, so moved.
Motion made and seconded to approve Resolution 64 for HK Ventures for the DEIS. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution's approved.
I'll move Resolution Number 65, which classifies site plan for the Riverhead Food Shops as a type-one action and circulates lead agency requirements.
Second to motion?
Motion made and seconded to approve Resolution 65, Riverhead Food Shops for secret action. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Resolution's approved.
I'll move Resolution 66, the shops at Waiting River to classify the site plan application as an unlisted action, tune to secret, so moved.
Second to motion?
Motion made and seconded to approve Resolution 66, the shops at Waiting River, classifying as secret action. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Resolution 67, Norfolk Developers LLC. Resolution to classify a 10-lot major subdivision application as a type-one action pursuant to secret and request lead agency status.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve Resolution 67, Norfolk Developers LLC, for a type-one secret action. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? It's approved.
I'll move 68, SL Gateway Liquor Store Expansion, rescinding the hospital approval. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve Resolution 68, SL Gateway Liquor Expansion, rescinding from 2015 hospital approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Resolution's approved.
I'll move Resolution 69, granting final site plan approval for SL Gateway Liquor Store Expansion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve Resolution 69, final site plan approval for SL Gateway Liquor Store. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm always happy to vote yes on the liquor store expansion.
Resolution's approved. Okay, public comments on any matter in front of the planning board? Does anyone wish to address the planning board?
Good afternoon, Chairman Carey, members of the board. I just wanted to bring something to your attention. Subsequent to our, the last planning board meeting, we were here with 48 Cromer LLC. Subsequent to that meeting, we had a meeting with the fire district. We went to the commissioners' meeting. It was a very good meeting, very informative. I can't speak for the fire district or the town, but the fire district, I'm not stating this as a fact, but they indicated that they had requested a lot of information from the town and did not get the information they had requested on numerous occasions. The only site plan that they had was a 325-21 site plan that the board of commissioners had seen. Now, I know the chiefs had seen other ones, but the commissioners had only seen one site plan. They did not see, you know, issues that they had concerns with had been addressed. So what I provided to them, I have a copy if you'd like it, we, I gave them a copy of the seven, eight site plans, starting with the 812 site plan, which was the public hearing. There are six revisions since then, and I highlighted every revision in color and went through it with them. And there is now a seventh revision that we talked to the fire district about that now adds a fire access gate all the way to the south with a rear drive access that goes around behind the tanks. We also gave a copy of that to Jeff Murphy. That's the only change. It doesn't change drainage, doesn't change pervious surface, it's just a new gate with a new access. What we did do is we had storage behind the tanks for those empty tanks. My client would lose some storage to allow another access road, which would be very convenient. Now the district could go, the department could go all the way around the tanks from any direction. With that, we had requested of Mr. Murphy, we would, the fire district said that they would take it under advisement, and hopefully they will get back to us. I know they do have a meeting the day prior to your next planning board meeting. We would like to request, we requested this of Jeff Murphy, and we'd like to request to the board. The fire district was very thankful when they saw this. They, now they had seen the whole, the whole series of changes. They saw that the orientation of the tank did change. They saw all these changes, and, you know, they seemed very receptive. I can't speak for them, but they seemed very receptive. It appeared that there was a disconnect, and I can't speak for the town or the fire district, but there was supposedly was a disconnect where they had requested copies of the plans all along, and they did not get, they only got one plan. I gave them eight, and we went through each one of them. They were highlighted in color during the board of fire commissioners' meeting. And when they saw it, there was a real, you know, I could see that there was a lot of information that they saw that they then realized that there were a lot of issues that were addressed. So we're going to request from this board to, we're in contact with the fire district. Hopefully they'll provide something, but even with this additional road, which exceeds the code and takes away some additional storage that my client has, is even, again, another thing that's done above the code that we weren't asked to do, we're doing it, so we're asking that the resolution be brought up for a revote. Thank you.
We'll have to resubmit the plan, right?
Mr. Murphy has the plan. Again, the change is so minimal, if you'd like, I can give you these, I got copies here that you can, you've seen these all. The only one you haven't seen is the last one, and it's highlighted in color. You can see that the change is strictly limited to, it's the last page, I did these in a date order, so the change...
The idea is, it is a change.
Yeah, the change is strictly...
And if we have to approve it, then it has to be that one.
And a paved road, in lieu of the storage area, it's a gate and paper.
But that's, that's the plan we would have to approve.
That's correct, that's correct. I mean, the action, we could approve the previous one, but that could be approved, but this one here is an additional step we would do, and then for final site plan, we could, you know, I know Jeff has already looked at it, it's not much of a change at all. It's literally, doesn't change anything as far as pervious surface, doesn't change, it doesn't affect anything onsite as far as onsite circulation, parking. Alls it does is take, with that setback we require from the tanks from the property line, where we had storage for the empty tanks that my client sells to homeowners in Berries and Phil's, they'll give up some of that storage to now allow, instead of it being storage, just a roadway or, you know, a driveway, it's not really a roadway, a driveway that gives access across the back of the property with an additional emergency gate that now enters the site behind the tanks for the fire department. So the fire district has, they've seen everything.
Are they going to put something in writing? Or they're going to put something in writing?
I can't speak to the district. We're hoping they, they said they would take it under advisement, get back to us, but I'm hoping they do. Like I said, they do have a commissioners' meeting before the next meeting, and if this, I know that, speaking with Mr. Murphy, it's, it's changing the date of the, of the resolution and adding the whereas where there was an additional emergency gate added, and that's a very simple thing for the resolution. And I know what we would do is we would notify the board, if this were to come on to the next meeting, we would notify the board of fire commissioners and the fire district that, that it is up for a revote, so if they had any comments, we would, you know, hope that they would be here, we'd gladly, you know, gladly meet with them again if necessary. Thank you.
So Jefferson, can you share that with us, please? Because we haven't seen it. And also...
Rather than having to work, I'd like to request that they be sent to my office, they be officially logged in and referred to you. If Marty emailed them to me, we'll send you a PDF. Fire chief has, I mean, fire marshal, excuse me, has not had a chance to review this. I got my copy on Tuesday morning, I think Craig told me he got his on Monday.
I think he wants to distribute it.
So the fire marshal just got his copy, so I don't know what, Marty, Craig Zidick approved the last version, so there's no reason why he wouldn't approve this one. The big question came from comments from the fire. As Marty part, pointed out at the last Plinymore meeting, they're not an involved agency, they don't issue permits on applications, they're pursuant to secret, they're an interested agency, but they don't issue any approvals or permits like Department of Transportation.
So... So I do have, whatever information comes out of the fire district, please share it with us.
Absolutely.
From a site plan approval process legal matter, Dick, question for you is, is once this board approves, or in this case disapproves, a site plan, what is the process for coming back for a revote?
I think the best thing is for Marty to formally submit a complete set of plans with the revision, with new dates, and then for the town to send those to the fire district so there's no question. And that, that's, we get, we get tripped up when, you know, I understand you bring these here tonight to hand to them, and that is perhaps helpful for the discussion purposes, but when we get to actually writing the resolution that's going to perhaps revote this, it should have been submitted formally. Because at the moment, it's a denied, at the moment, there is no pending application. It's been denied.
Right, that's my question.
And I'm afraid that that's, that's the chairman's question, so you need to submit a new set.
Do you see any...
I'm not saying...
Any negatives of us taking this now?
No, you can, you're welcome to take it. It's an exhibit the gentleman's brought you. He's brought you something and said, "Hey, for discussion purposes tonight, I want to show you this, I think I've got this resolved." It seems like it's heading in a positive direction, and I'm not saying that it won't go in a positive direction, but from, since we are now with, dealing with a denied application, it needs to get back before the board, and the way to get it back before the board is not just to casually hand them something at a meeting and say, "Gee, would you vote on this next time?" It's to submit an amended, which is what Joe Baer asked as this was happening, and as the chairman's asked, submit it formally, and then I think it would be, given this history, a good idea for the planning department to send it directly to the fire commissioners, so there's no question they got the same information and move from there.
Just to point out to, to carry on what Richard said and what Marty said about this ambiguity about what the fire commissioners got and what they didn't got, they, up until this year, our communication, meaning the planning department's intake from the fire commissioners, has been to give two sets of plans to the fire marshal, who then would give one set to the fire department, through the fire chief, and he would be the liaison between the commissioners and the fire marshal, and then Marty, I mean, Craig Zidick within, for his comments, with their comments, integrated as part of his memo to us. As of this year, we receive formal communication from the fire commissioners. They do not want the fire chief interacting with the chief fire marshal. They want direct communication of all the application materials being sent to them. So as of this year, the last two months, we are going to be sending copies of the complete applications, materials, by mail, certified return receipt requests directly to the commissioners, and that correspondence will be, I guess, coming back either through Craig to us or from the fire commissioners directly to us and then on to you.
Does that make them an involved agency?
It's their information only. Again, they still do not have, and again, I'm not a lawyer, but they do not issue permits, they don't issue approvals, their advisory, basically, and they rely solely on Craig Zidick and the fire marshals on whether or not a project complies with the fire code. So that interaction will still take place, but I don't want there to be any ambiguity about what information they got or didn't receive. In the case of this application, they got a copy of the application material through their fire chief as part of the special permit when they submitted a site plan application. John Brown, who's the attorney, sent a letter to the town last, end of last year, and they wanted additional, they want input back on the application, but at that point, they had already received the site plan material, nothing new had changed, but in John Brown's letter, it said they wanted to see comments from Craig Zidick. Well, Craig Zidick had not seen the revised plan because it had not been submitted. He did not have the fire safety analysis at that point because it had been submitted. We got that information beginning of this year, and I can tell you, because I was at the meeting, copies of the application with the fire safety analysis were given to the fire chief, who was then, I guess, I don't want to, gave it to the fire commissioners, but whatever information we had, it was given to the fire commissioners. So I don't want anybody to believe that we did not share information with the fire commissioners. It was, so...
Well, when you say "we," what do you mean by "we"?
On which part?
You keep saying "we" share it. Who is "we"?
Oh, Craig Zidick with the fire, he met with the fire chief, handed him the...
So that, that contradicts what the applicant just told us.
Correct.
And he didn't certify that that happened because he doesn't know for sure.
Right.
But again, we're still trying to argue or debate something that may have happened or may not have happened months ago, and you're standing here telling us this all over again, but the application got voted down, so...
Right.
You know, it's, the attorney explained to us, it's a new process.
Yeah, yeah.
So let's start over.
And that's what I'm...
And you also used the word "we" again about delivering plans to the fire district. Who is "we"?
The fire chief fire marshal.
He's going to continue to do that?
We are now, the planning department is now going to be sending certified copy, I mean, copies of the applications, materials by mail, certified return receipt... mean, copies of the applications, materials by mail, certified return receipt, return receipt requests, so that they get materials...
So that's not, that's not the chief fire marshal, that's the planning department?
That is correct.
It's under your control, not the fire marshal?
That is correct.
Okay.
So going forward...
Because he's not, he's not under your authority anymore, correct?
That is correct. And that's why we were trying to avoid that ambiguity. And going forward, we're trying to fix that gap in the process, or how things get moved back, material gets moved from department to department. We're going to be sending copies directly to the fire commissioners by mail, certified return receipt requests, so that they know that we got it. And that follows up with what Dick Gaylor was saying. We know that, and in this case, we want the copy so that this revised plan, we will send a copy to the fire commissioners directly, and in addition to the fire chief fire marshal. So I'm agreeing with everything that Richard said, and that's why I'm updating you as to what we're doing going forward.
Okay.
So there's no ambiguity as to what we're doing and the change in the process of going forward. That was it.
The chain of command is the commissioner and the fire marshal. Where's the chain of command in that?
The chief fire marshal is.
Chief fire marshal?
He has, he has the authority to interpret and imply the code. The fire commissioners do not.
He's our employee.
He is a certified code officer. Only a certified code officer can imply, interpret and imply the code.
Dick, does town code call for these plans to go to the fire department or fire district?
I'm not aware that it does.
No.
Because I had heard that mentioned somewhere, and I'd like that clarified.
I'd have to look. I don't have that.
I think, I mean, in this case, it just makes sense to get an extra set of plans to have the planning director send them to the fire.
Stanley, when did it end the handicap committee?
And Stan, that was, that was my only point with, in agreeing with, Richard just said, is make sure we get a complete set of the plans and we'll send them directly to the commissioners. That was my point.
Sounds good.
Very simple for the town board to pass a resolution, adding one more copy when they submit copies.
I, I...
And it goes to the commissioners.
I thought it was required.
We do that. We're doing that now. We're going to do that now.
I thought it wasn't required.
It wasn't. I don't, did you codify it now, or is it going to be...
We have a referral sheet of all the different departments and agencies that it goes to, and it's only those agencies that have authority to issue permits, like Health Department, DPW, DEC, that sort of thing. Under the fire marshal, it says that they shall get two copies. And the reason why it says two copies is one copy goes to the chief fire marshal for his review, and he gives one set of copies to the fire, with the fire district, whether it's Jamesport, Riverhead, whatever. So he gets two sets. We now are changing that so that one set goes to the fire marshal, and then one set's going to go directly to the fire commissioners.
Okay.
So just for clarification.
And who is in your office? Which, there's a fire person in your office, right?
He's in my office, but he's not under my supervision.
No, I mean, but he's, he's right there.
He's, he's ten steps away.
Right.
And we, Greg and I interact with him on a daily basis. Any other questions?
No.
I'd just like to add that if, we could have copies delivered for the board. I could have them here by nine-thirty tomorrow morning. I'll get as many copies.
You just submit them officially through the planning department.
Right. Absolutely. You're right. We'll get them to the planning department. I know that in terms of the discussion about the fire district and department, just one thing, and I think this may, Mr. Carey, be something that may trigger that comment that you made, is that in, because of the LP install, there are requirements with the fire safety plan, and fire, the fire safety plan requires input from the fire department. So that, so in this case, not directly in the town code, but through the application of fire code.
Okay.
It requires that, that communication. So we could get that information back to you right away. Again, it's such a minimal revision that even, you know, I mean, there's such a minimal revision. I think that it could be done. I don't know if the resolution is signed unofficially yet. I know that we're putting together Article seventy-eight stuff, and we have thirty days after it's signed. We haven't received the signed copy. We don't know if it's been signed yet or what the date is of the signature of the resolution, because it doesn't become official until it's signed by the chair. So I don't know what the status of that is. What we'd like to do is if it hasn't been, we get the copies, it's a minimal change, and we get this up for a re-vote. That would be, I think, would be the, what we would hope would be done for my client, because he's, again, I think it was, for whatever reason, and that has not, it has, you know, it has nothing to do, in fact, the attorney for the fire district mentioned that to us after the meeting Tuesday night. It has nothing to do with us as the applicants. I mean, we did everything we're supposed to do. They said they didn't have the information all the way through that they were requesting. Whether that's true or not, I can't say it is or it isn't. It's none of my business. Alls I know is we've done everything we were supposed to do, and we're sort of in a snag here that's costing my client a tremendous amount of financial hardship, and we'd like to correct that. Thank you.
Okay. Any other public comment? Do we have anyone on still? Any public comment? Okay, the minutes from June third for approval?
So moved. Second motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Minutes are approved. Any other business with the planning board? Any other discussions?
Motion to adjourn?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Last week and everybody.